I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor O'Gorman?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mary Davis?
Here.
Ms. Paul McCollum?
Here.
Everyone, it's President. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I ask that all of us rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Mark Bixler attached to the Church of Christ.
Our Father, we are so thankful for so many things that you've given us that we too often take for granted. We thank you for this country and for those who have gone before us, many who have given their lives in protection of our freedoms and our growth. And we thank you for this city and for the many people who have been servants of this city to help this city grow and grow in a good way. We thank you for those who are currently standing here trying to do that. And we pray that our attitudes will be focused on cooperation and harmony and working in every way to help each other to help this city grow. And we thank you, Father, again, for these people and for the freedom that we have to worship. And we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please remain standing for the flag salute. Mr. Smith?
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address that item. Did anyone from the audience wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? I gotta have you come up here so they can record you. I'm sorry.
Jim Roberts of the City of Tansville?
I would... Ten. Thank you.
No, Mayor, item 10 is not on the consent. It's just my verbal report.
No.
Sorry, I was looking at last week's agenda. I told you, don't let it happen. Silly mistake.
Yes, we have pulled item 10. Anyone from the council wish to have anything removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
To a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with number 10 removed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote. Audience oral and written communications. The City Council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented, if any. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time when that item is brought up. Are there any comments from the public?
James Roberts, Kansas City. I'm sorry, is this for audience oral and written communication?
Yes.
Last council meeting, item six on the agenda had to be discussed. And that pertained to the re-aligning of the taxiway on the airport.
Mm-hmm.
And I just had some questions. I think what you voted on was design only. Perhaps can you add your answer?
That is correct. Design only.
Design only. My question is, is design gas and stone, or is it going to be amended?
So there will be some public outreach to this design. We'll have some meetings and everything once that preliminary design is set and everything. So we will reach out, especially to tenants.
Thanks, okay. As I said, her users have some concerns about this design as I've seen. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My cover, City of Tansville. First of all, I want to start out by saying Tansville public services has an excellent job on a lot of things. However, our response to the snow that we received after Christmas was not appropriate. A lot of city streets and residential areas may have had plowed. With 20 inches of snow, that means people can't be in the hospital, people can't get to work, and we need to do a better job. We can have a balanced budget, but if the balanced budget means that we don't meet the needs of our folks to be able to travel after snow, it's not like Tansville doesn't have to deal with here now for over 15 years, and there's been snow every year. So we need to maybe plan just a little bit more, include more in the budget so we can actually get out of our passive driveways, down the street to a plowed street. But right now, it doesn't want to happen. And like you said, you guys did a great job. I realize that it was more snow than we normally get, but it's... I can understand the argument if we lived in Palmville, because Palmville is very good. We get somewhere every year, so we, as citizens, deserve to have that. And like you said, you guys did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Just make good in your life, honestly. Thank you very much.
Do you want to respond to that? Or do you want to break? No. All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? All right. If not, we will move on to the 2020 census presentation by April D. Wiley of the United States Census Bureau.
Councilmembers of Tansville, thank you for this time to educate everyone on the census. This is coming up on April 1st. I provided everyone with some information consorting the 2020 census. I didn't have any specific questions as where we spent money the last census we had. So I pulled some numbers from R.O.A.M. It's a website that you can look on and it's in your packet where you can actually do a deep dive and find out where the money was distributed to each state, each county, so on and so forth. My deep dive found out that there were 600 adult Tansvillians that were not counted in the last census, and there were 2,000 children that were not captured on the last census. Now, what this equates to is dollars. So it equates to $2,000 per person per year. So $18,000 for the adults was not utilized. That's $18,000. I've been a firefighter for 21 years. That's a salary. That's a year's salary for a prodie. Not to mention our children. These are this is money that we can use in our school systems, money for our roads, money for our public works for more snow, more snowplows, things like that. I don't want to see that happen in my city again. So it's very important that we get the message out. I am working with the city developer to make that, Mr. Jay, to make sure that we capture this area, make sure... I'm working with the school board that can be putting it out in the school board newsletter. That newsletter goes out to every single parent who has a child in any of our schools. So hopefully, we can get the word out. Maybe we can get a spot in the newspaper, you know, the importance of the census and it is the importance of it in our community. I have provided you with some information. I am the only partnership specialist in Tansville. I do have a lot of area to cover, but I live here. So if you need anything, if you need any information, if you need any literature, any media quotes, any topics for discussion, please give me a call at your disposal. I can come up, give you a briefing on things, pass out literature. I've got tons of them. My kids have all this stuff piled up in the garage, and so they say, Mom, please distribute this. So if you have any questions for me, I did include on the top of your packet my stamp. It's got my name and phone number and everything on it, and it also includes my email. So again, if you have any questions, please, I'm here to help you. I'm here to help the area of Tansville, and I want us to do really well. There are three ways to participate in the census this year. You can go online, you can go by phone, or again, there's the numerators that come to your door. We are hiring. I have had a lot of interested people in job opportunities that we do have. They pay $18 an hour, 21 years, by the way. And my numerators will go out, and they'll be doing it door to door. I have reached out to most of the faith-based organizations here in Tansville to make sure that if they're housing homeless people, that we also catch them as well. We have a gated community of them. The prison will be counted as well. So we have all of them. They are Tansvillians, and they will be counted as well. So if you'd like to partner with me or become a CCC partner, I'd be glad to have you guys' support in that. Did you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the audience? Go ahead, Phil.
When you do your canvass throughout that period of time, which is what I'm...
The canvassing has already been done, Mr. Smith. It's already been... It was done last year in September and October, so we already have... We basically have everybody's address now. That does not include, like, my son's living in a camper, my friend's house in Bay Harbor. That is included. But this is not an email address or address. But we have hit all of our canvassing canvassings over. We are doing those rule counts, so somebody comes, you know, contacts me and says, hey, I've noticed that there's a family living in the RV park, and I don't think that they were on last September. They were here, you know, they may be counted. That's definitely something that I can get passed along to my numerators so that they make sure that they're on the family count.
I guess my question would, when you're doing the count...
Okay.
How do you know? Do you ever go back a certain number of times if you've missed people? Do you have a tally, and then you mark everyone off that's counted, and then you continue to go back? Because you came up with a number of 600 adults, 2,000 children, and that was after everything was said and done. So you must have had a methodology of getting to that point. I just care if...
So last time we had the same census, we did not have... We could not do it online. So this year, you will be able to do that online. Once you do it online, it's over. You don't have to worry about it by knocking on your door. You are counted. If you do have somebody come to your door and knock, we'll do that five times. At the sixth time, we'll ask your neighbors. How many people live in the house? There are only 10 questions on the census this year that are very vague. The citizenship question is not on the census this year. It is not, and will not ever be again. It's just some simple questions. How many people are in your household? That's very important. If you have a baby that's due on April 1st, that baby needs to be counted. How many elderly, which are beginning income, do you own, rent, or buy? And at the time the census is being participated in, are you consider yourself a male or female? So these are only 10 questions this year. It's very easy. The numerators will come around, they will have an ID, they'll have a bag, and they'll have a pump out. And basically, I load up with the information. They go door to door, and this is specified places that I have assigned them. And most of my participants are elderly. They're over the age of 55 and 60, and... I'm sorry, I said elderly. A few questions still. The retirees, excuse me. The retirees are most of my numerators. I've been able to... I apologize for that. But they're retired, and so that they have a lot of time to go out and do these things for me. So they'll be going door to door. They'll do that five times. And on the sixth time, we might go to the neighbor's door and ask you, you know, how many people live in Mr. Smith's house?
Okay. You know the best. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
City Clerk Report, number four.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, before you, I have an item regarding the vacancy of Councilmember Kenneth Heiki. With the resignation of Councilmember Kenneth Heiki on January 2nd, 2020, a vacancy was created on the City Council. Government Code Section 36512 allows the City Council sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy to appoint someone to the position. Since the vacancy occurred in the second half of Councilmember Heiki's term, the person appointed filled the vacancy for the unexpired term of former incumbent, which would mean November of this year. If the council does not fill the vacancy by appointment, then they require to call the special election before the sixty-day period expires. The special election is required to be held during the next regularly scheduled election date, not less than 114 days from the call of the special election. The next regularly scheduled elections are March 3rd and November 3rd. March 3rd, however, falls less than 114 days from today's date and is therefore too close to meet the requirements for calling a special election. The next scheduled one, November 3rd, is also the same date as Councilmember Heiki's term expiration, is therefore also not an option. As a reminder of all of this, this is at large seat currently, and will transition to district-based District 2 of the Hillary November. So all that being said, staff would recommend that the council direct staff to publish a notice to appoint one member at large to the Tansville City Council to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Councilmember Heiki for a term to expire following the declaration of results of the November 3rd, 2020 election.
Any questions from the audience concerning this? Council? All right, then, we need to direct you. Do I need a motion to direct them? I'll entertain a motion to direct staff to publish a notice to appoint one member at large to the Tansville City Council.
I'm making a motion out of air that we direct staff to publish a notice to appoint one member at large to the City of Tansville Council.
Called second? Moved and seconded, as presented by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote. And in that, when you were advertising everything, explain how people can apply if they want to be appointed.
Yes, so the current plan is to have it published in the newspaper twice and get it from there. It has to again follow through the sixty days.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Number six.
Madam Mayor, I need to refuse myself because I'm unemployed by RSI Petroleum.
Okay. Okay, disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum for December 30th, 2019 through January 13th, 2020.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions concerning that?
Motion to approve.
All second? Moved and seconded, as presented by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a three-zero vote.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the first item that I have for you tonight is the Urban Greening Grant Design Services Contract. As you all will recall, in September of this year, the urban green grant is 470 approximately trees to be planted in four different locations around the city. Just as a reminder, 100% grant program funded by the State of California. As you'll recall, in September of this year, we advertised for the design phase services for this project and received two proposals priced at $134,215,000 respectively, both of which were greatly in excess of our budgeted amount. And so we came to you all and asked that you would reject those bids on the basis that we probably didn't write the proposal properly, or that we felt like we couldn't find design services sufficient to this task for a dollar amount below that. And in that, action was in accordance with our grant policy for the hiring of professionals. So we did that. You all rejected the proposals, and we set about approaching a few architecture, landscape architecture firms that we know have used in the past. One specifically was Wood Architecture, who was the son consultant on the Harpy Ride. To give you guys a context of work they've done, they were also a landscaping designer for the Pilot Flying J Travel Center. So you've seen their work before, and they provided a proposal to us for $62,560, which is within the budget that we have in a grant and far more in line with what we were expecting for this project. And so the proposal is within the funding of the project, and so we don't expect any additional fiscal impact associated with this step. And we therefore recommend that you award the proposal from Wood Architecture to Wood Architecture for $62,560 for design services on the urban greening project and authorize the city manager to approve. Any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract, or $6,200. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the audience concerning this? Council?
Let's plant some trees. Get it designed anyway. I'll make a motion to, on staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Moved and seconded on staff's recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote. Community Development Block Grant Program.
Very good. Honorable Mayor and Council, the second item I have for you tonight, let's stretch your memory a little bit here. Community Development Block Grant Program, or CBVG is the acronym. This title signifies north side sidewalk phase two project design. So as background for you all are reminded, we, every three years or so, we get about $150,000 from the CBVG program. It's administered by the county of Kern. We are automatically a component of that grant program. That's money that flows through HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the State of California. We don't get a lot of these funds because we don't qualify. Qualifications are based on the percentage of your population that falls in the disadvantaged category. And while we do have some in town, we don't... We have, frankly, a shrinking percentage of the town that falls within that category. The funds have to be spent within the area of town that qualifies, and the only area that qualifies according to their mapping is the area north of the railroad tracks or north of Tansville, depending on how you, like I said, the downtown area north of the tracks. And so this is the memory stretching part. You all approved this project scope back in January of 2018. So a couple of years ago, we are required to bring a public hearing for the selection of the project, which we did that back at that time. The project solicited was to continue the construction of infill gap for sidewalk within the north side Tansville, and specifically the three blocks between H Street and I Street. Robinson, Mojave, and Davis were the targets for this project. Budget, so we're going to go as far as the money gets us based upon the bidding conditions. That was the project that was approved. We then were waiting two years for our money to accumulate before getting to this stage. So it's time for us to hire a consultant to design the project with the intention to potentially construct here in 2020. So I got to get that all lined up. Anyway, that's the background. We solicited a proposal from Probst and Richard Consulting Group, who did the last phase of work for us and have done work with us from time to time. Baker's still to perform the needed design work, and a copy of their proposal is attached to the report that I have for you. Oh, great, Mr. Smith. Anyway, and so from a fiscal impact standpoint, the proposed budget is about $20,000, and we're proposing to fund that out of the Development Services Department budget for consulting. And we may or may not make adjustments to that budget here during mid-year, but the budget, the funds exist in 05-0 to do this work. And so we're confident that we can cover this cost. It's better under the grant program to cover this cost out of the general fund instead of through the grant program, because there are a lot of additional rules and steps you have to take in order to hire a design consultant and utilize the grant funds. And so the last couple of times we've done this, the design phase is such a small piece, we sell the fund that both to save ourselves the trouble and to match the construction dollars when we get to that construction phase. So that's the purpose. So with that, my recommendation is that you approve the agreement between the City of Tansville and Probst and Richard Consulting Group. Would you have any answer to any questions?
Any questions from the audience concerning this? Council? I will...
Be a good project.
Yes.
Continue my side work circle.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a agreement between the City of Tansville and Probst and Richard Consulting Group for engineering and surveying services.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded based on staff's report to approve the Community Development Block Grant Program North Side Sidewalks Phase Two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote. Number 10.
Would you like a report, Madam Mayor, on this? Would you like to...
Mr., did you have questions concerning this? Number 10.
May I ask you, Mayor?
No, because I got to get you on the recording. I apologize.
I'm sorry. I'm just concerned about, I'd like an explanation, just put it right here, regarding amended and restated President and Minimizing Agreement for the City of Tansville. I apologize if I didn't say what the paragraph says, as the city... I guess you read, explained it to us. You were attending to anybody? Was it really on the extension? I don't understand.
No, I apologize. I had a previous version of the agenda. So item 10, my previous agenda had city manager reports.
Okay.
Since added. So Jay, can you take this one if you like? That was my error. I just wanted to...
Is that a question? As to... Sure.
Okay, so I'll give you a truncated report on this. This is City of Tansville entered into a reimbursement agreement, improvement and reimbursement agreement with Walmart many years ago. That was a component of the execution of the project. They were building many public improvements, some of which they were funded and a handful of which we agreed that they would construct and that we would reimburse at the completion of construction. In July of... That original agreement was July 2017. In July 2019, with all the work done, there were a few changes, and we came back to you with amended and restated agreement that just kind of collected the pieces of pie at the end of the project, and we presented, and you all approved that. Well, if you think we move slowly, Walmart never signed that agreement between July last year and this year and today, but we did discover one final accounting item, adding approximately $9,900 to the reimbursement for the improvements they made to our sewer lift station. And so I, that would be legal team for Walmart, and the simple thing to do was to just have them not sign that agreement that was approved in July of 2019, make the correction right now, and then we'll send this version back to them. So the only change between July of 2019 and today is that we are agreeing to reimburse an additional $9,900 as it relates to some work they did to improve our sewer lift station there at the corner of their drive entrance, the signalized entrance on Tansville Boulevard with that block wall. So that's what the agreement is. And yes, we recommend that you approve and authorize, Mayor, to enter into amended and restated improvement and reimbursement agreement for the City of Tansville Walmart.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So vote, on staff's recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of things for the... Just as a reminder to the audience, the entire agenda is available online, and there was an explanation for this particular recommendation from staff in that agenda. You know, what we leave at the back is only just highlights of the ins and outs. If anyone would like assistance in the on the mail on this, we'd be happy to help.
Thank you. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. We are sitting in the midst of an award-winning engineer. I want to highlight some pretty serious accomplishment that Jay Sosser has recently achieved. So council and public is aware that Jay, through the American Society of Civil Engineers, ASE, from the Civil Engineer for the Public Sector in the San Maquene region, which is Fresno, a control Tansville. That was a month ago. Is automatically entered into the Southern section for the ASE Award, which was basically from Fresno down to the incorporated LA area along with some of the award. He won that award also. That automatically entered him, Jay, into the State of California's award. The State of California is its own region. There are nine regions in the entire country, and Jay won that award for the entire State of California as a region of the State of California. It is quite amazing. So I personally encourage you to thank Jay, congratulate him. It's a reflection of his work... It's a reflection of his work ethic and his ability to manage his department, but also a reflection of city, staff and the city as a whole, its community. What Jay brings to the table and what all the others that work with the city of Tachry bring to the table, we recognize and appreciate him and welcome to. And so now that Jay has won the entire state of California, he's been automatically entered into the, to the national award, which is the award ceremony is in Washington, D.C. sometime this summer fall. So film eleven on that, but I think Jay has a great shot of being the civil engineer of the year for the entire United States and America. So wish him luck. Yeah, he's going to have some raise and office and talent and all kinds of fun stuff, right? We're very excited for Jay. Very, very.
Congratulations.
Thanks. The second thing I wanted to mention this evening is our twenty nineteen year interview. So today we kicked off a presentation, if you will, of our twenty nineteen year interview. This is a reflection back, we've been doing this for some six, seven, eight years, maybe this year. The theme was the stories of success. This is not just our stories of success. This is the story of success for all of our city and our community. It's about telling the story of Tachry. And we have hard copies here that are your workstation. I think we put some in the back also, if you'd like one. I presented today at the Chamber of Commerce, quite a lengthy paraplegic presentation, but this evening, what I'd like to do is highlight some videos that we played. Our department heads each recorded the video in their key direction and we can shuttle those videos through groups for the council and take any questions that you would have. So please, actually.
Welcome to City Hall. Whether you're paying a warrant, getting a passport, or just have a general question, the administration department is here to help. This year, the administration department, in conjunction with the Tachry Police Department, implemented new records request software. An extra quest allows citizens to request records online. Those records can then be published, increasing transparency to all our citizens. This year, the airport completed the environmental assessment for the taxiway relocation project and received a grant for its design. We also focus on community outreach, provide space for the civil air patrol and the Tachry building project. We also continue to partner with the Tachry State Program in front of the Tachry Airport on the annual board of death break rocket launch and biannual Stargate event.
I'm Hannah Chung, I'm the director. The most notable accomplishment during this year is receiving the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. This was the first time ever the city has received such awards. Furthermore, we also submitted two thousand nine and twenty budget documents to GFOA for a distinguished budget presentation award. We continuously strive to deliver our public output and be transparent. Residents can find the financial report and budget documents from the city's site under the finance department.
I'm Corey Coswell, economic development coordinator, and I'm here at the Psycho Village Co., the executive office co-creatives meeting at CAPE, Oakland and downtown in two thousand twenty. It was part of several private reinvestment projects in the city that took shape in two thousand nineteen. The city of Tachry celebrated the grant opening of eleven new businesses last year, proving both small and large business can thrive in our community. Healthcare continues to be our fastest growing job sector, as seen by local contributions from the best health, Dignity Health, Kaiser Permanente and a host of others who are all offering the most comprehensive care ever available to Tachry residents. Two thousand nineteen was the start of a renaissance of business offerings in the city of Tachry as our business friendly landscape continues to succeed. We look forward to that continuing in two thousand twenty with more exciting opportunities coming soon.
I'm Chu Craig with the Tachry Police Department. As we begin another new year, I would like to thank our entire staff for their hard work in two thousand and nineteen. Our supervisors, police officers, detectives, police technicians, splitting staff and our volunteers, all did incredible work throughout the year. Our department placed a great deal of effort into developing and strengthening community partnerships this past year, which included the successful launch of our neighborhood improvement project, the formation of several neighborhood block crews and a number of other community outreach engagement efforts. We'll continue to work on all of these programs in twenty twenty and look forward to another great year.
Jay Slosser, Development Services Director here. We have another big year in twenty nineteen. I'm standing in front of our new Morgan Drive Transit Center that we finished construction on earlier this year. We also built all this new sidewalk on Cherry Lane. And in case you didn't know, this, this opened in twenty nineteen too.
Hi, I'm Don Marsh, Public Works Director with the city of Tachry. Here to give you some highlights from twenty nineteen and things that the Public Works Department has been working on. Certainly at the top of the list is this beautiful Centennial Plaza Fountain. We refurbished the fountain after several years of mothball and is a great addition to downtown, if you haven't already. Also on the list, we continue with our sidewalk replacement program. We spent over thirty thousand dollars replacing sections of sidewalks throughout the city. Also, we invested some money in some new equipment and replacement of old equipment for Public Works. And then also our public safety power shut off, so everybody had experience. Nobody lost water or service during those times. We kept all the services going. Just want to say thanks to Public Works and Public Works employees for all your hard work this year and look forward to a even better year next year.
Thank you to you, our community. Our messaging through our social media platforms has seen a large growth over the past year. We continue to create video messages that you are paying attention to. Our videos were seen more than one hundred and sixty thousand times in twenty nineteen. We also have a great working relationship with our local and regional news outlets. What's coming in twenty twenty? Podcasts. That's right, we will be podcasting, interviewing and talking to people in our community about our community. So follow us at City of Tachry.
So those videos, let's speak for themselves. And I mentioned this morning, our city manager records, quarterly city manager records, I presented the videos and all of the slides that dive a little deeper into the details, all the parts this morning. And then at the Chamber of Commerce this evening, I was happy, or this afternoon, I was happy to do that and we have road reading for long and so on and so forth. One thing I want to highlight on the finance page, award for financial reporting achievement. So that's a certificate that Hannah and her, her staff earned. It does have a twenty eighteen, it's kind of stamped on it, but if you look close, it's dated September twenty nineteen. That's what we received this year, this past year. But the award for financial reporting is a big deal, right? Everything hinges on a bunch of, the plan, it is our playbook, the revenues, expenditures, who we hire, equipments we make purchase, services that we provide, all hinge on that budget. And it was recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada as an award winning budget. So much to Hannah and her staff for putting that together and continue to keep us in the black, if you will. Obviously, it's a, it's an effort that all of our departments and quite frankly, all of our employees share in, but she keeps track of the details. So thank you Hannah and your staff. So if you'd like, there are more of these. There are more of these in printed form and I may see you with plas or rotary or lions or wherever our paths may cross and we can go over all of the details. Or just come by City Hall and I'd be happy to show you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member reports, Mr. Bailey.
Madam, I have, Mayor, I have nothing.
Mr. Smith?
I'll kind of make it short, you know, it's kind of hard. At the current council of government meeting last Thursday, Caltrans District Nine, which is out of Bishop, of which we are a part, gave a presentation on truck climbing lanes. This has been my focus on that board for, I forget how long you've been on there. Coming up on the phone here is maybe, I've been championing truck climbing lanes for Tachry for a very long time. They gave a very interesting presentation and slideshow. They, they showed the three different areas where they are proposing the, the different sectors. There's three areas, one's down starting around General Deal Road up to where the two twenty-three are the cutoff comes, that section right there and then the next section is from right there up to just past Carth Flatt Keen. Then the next section is around Broom Road up to the summit. And there's total, they were, they analyzed the maximum grade in each one. Number one was a maximum grade of five percent. Number two, it gets steeper at six percent and number three is a five point five. A length of maximum grade, the total uphill distance was about two point six three miles in the number one segment, about three miles in the next one, and about two and a half miles on the third one. And these all penciled out at this point for their preliminary projections. This is a preliminary study. They're just around thirty million dollars or more, thirty, thirty-five million per sector. And that's a lot of money for just about three miles on each sector. But when you're cutting down the hillside and filling in with that, just to make an extra lane, it takes up a lot of money. It's not just a simple carve it off and pack it into the lane next to it. You get up near the second one up there around the loop area, you have things to consider around the railroads, Tachry Creek, all those have considerations. And the one thing that did strike me was that they gave a nice presentation and I, I went through their other study and what they're showing right now is, they get the cost analysis, they say all we need now is the money. We tried as a city to get some congestion mitigation, air quality, funding from Caltrans. Jay and the crew made a presentation to Caltrans and they united us. We felt that when you make, that was for doing preliminary studies and getting to the next phase. And they felt that the study alone does not reduce emissions. The end product, I think you could argue certainly would, if you've got freer moving traffic in those areas. So we're continuing to find or try to find funding sources through some other means other than that particular means for this project. And my question to them was, because in the study, they're showing twenty twenty-six completion. And I just, I would really like to see this completed before I die. And a lot of people would, but I'm just letting you know, I'm still hammering away at it. It's gotten further now that we actually have this, this study. It's always just been sort of, okay, we'll look at it, we'll look at it. So this is the first step. And even though it's a six-year-out timeline, that's better than we'll see. You know, how we tell our kids that they want something, well, we'll see usually means you're not going to get it. But I've been hammering and hammering on this for a lot of years. There is a study put out by Caltrans District, I think you can go on their website if you want to see the details and the maps and those kind of really detailed information about it. But I'm not going to let it go. I'm still your champion for this long as I'm as important on that board. So stay tuned and we'll hopefully get some money. The typical round of funding is about forty-five million, I think, is the, for every two-year cycle that we divide amongst all the cities for a lot of the funding. And that's not going to, you know, we're always competing with Bakersfield and County for a lot of the funds, like Centennial Freeway, which was over the last ten or so years, was about almost close to a billion dollars that we competed against. So we're just getting what we can, the leftovers, if you will, and I'm trying to impress on everyone, including the governor's staff, that this is not a city of Tachry project. We're just trying to get attention to it. This is a regional, if not national, project of significance because of the movement of goods between the valley, central California and the rest of the country. California produces a humongous amount of produce and goods that transfer from here to the rest of the country. We're getting more and more distribution centers. Amazon's going to be coming along, you've got Target, Charikas. All these all add to a number of trucks that are already impacting the congestion on the freeway. So that's it in a nutshell. We're looking at some other ways to fund this and we won't give up. So if you've got any questions, otherwise, stay tuned. Thank you.
I don't have anything except for I've noticed that the cleanup after the storm has been successful in a lot of areas. Thank you to all the staff. Anyway, just heads up, and there's more pockets, unfortunately.
I just want to say that I am so old that I remember when they built the freeway the first time. And that's been a long time and they've talked about these climbing lanes all those years. So this is absolutely wonderful that we may finally be able to, to see this vision come to fruition. And that's all we have this evening and we will stand adjourned. Thank you.